First beer free.
That's a great idea.
Uh.
Yeah, if I could have everybody's attention just for a minute, I, I wanna welcome everybody. And just give a, a huge thank you to folks who are joining us online. I know we have, uh, some members. Uh, I know I saw Mike Davenport on, and I think we've got another, uh, member or, uh, or two online. And of course, members who were able to join us in person. Uh, you know, this is really important for us to have, uh, uh, nice, uh, full boards. And, uh, and commissions, and we, we really couldn't do it without you. Your input is invaluable, and, uh, I'm thankful to have Nick here tonight too, uh, for, uh, for the, the training. I, I don't think we could ask for a better person to help guide us through this. So, uh, again, welcome everybody and, uh, and thank you so, so much, uh, for giving, giving of your kind. And, uh, please, we got a lot of, a lot of pizza and, uh, and salad and, and some sodas, uh, and water also behind Andy. So make yourself at home. Thanks again.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I'm Nick. I don't know if most of you know me, I think. Uh, I keep these usually pretty informal. I'll just kind of run through what I gotta say. Uh, can probably go as short as twenty, thirty minutes and take as long as the hour allotted depending on, uh, what kind of questions we're looking at. Uh, yeah, we, we just started. Uh, for those of you that are not on the Planning Commission or Variance Board, uh, this training has some stuff that isn't super relevant. Uh, that, some of it is relevant, but, uh, if you don't perform quasi judicial acts, which we will get into, uh, you can tune out if you want during that section, or you could pay attention if you think maybe down the line, you may be interested in joining the Council, Variance Board, um, HBRC also, or, uh, the Planning Commission. Now, I'll start with these quasi judicial actions, since that's generally the most important part of legal training. And a quasi judicial action is essentially when a board or commission acts in the role of a judge. Uh, it's something that you would see maybe in a, uh, final development plan application, uh, a variance request, or even something like a appeal from a staff decision, which, uh, there are some, uh, options for that in our code. Uh, I believe our, uh, newly established extended state regulations actually create appeals to the Planning Commission. And, uh, it, it's important to know when something's quasi judicial, because there's several, uh, items that present themselves when a quasi judicial hearing happens. First off, like I said, there's notice in hearing that's required. The applicant or appellate, uh, really wanna say the citizen here has a right to present witnesses and evidence. They have a right to legal argument. Uh, there's no ex parte contacts allowed by the board, which we'll get into. And the, uh, citizen has a right to an impartial decision maker. Now, uh, an ex parte communication, what is that? That's when you speak with, uh, someone outside of the confines of the hearing space to get a take or opinion or argument on the merits of the, uh, citizen's application or appeal or whatever they're coming to you for. Um, for example, you wouldn't, uh, i- if you knew someone with a variance request was coming to the variance board in two weeks, you wouldn't meet with that person a week prior and speak with them outside of the decision making space. Uh, this does not apply to staff. You can reach out to staff and speak to staff when, uh, an application presents itself. But in that case, I do usually like to encourage, uh, whatever communication is made with staff to be shared with the applicant. It really kind of creates a fair playing field. Um, the, another key part of ex parte contacts is the fact that you can prejudge an application. Really, when you go into a hearing or, uh, we'll just use the term hearing. When you go into a hearing, you really shouldn't have any, uh, decision made up in your mind. You shouldn't really know anything about what you're about to see other than what appeared in the packet and what you've read in the packet. Everything else that you, uh, need to form a basis for your decision will be presented by staff in the hearing and the applicant and whoever is there from the public to comment on the application or whatever, um, issue is raised, if there is, uh, right to public comment in that space. Um, prejudgment and ex parte communications can form the basis of invalidating the board's decision or the commission's decision. So it's really important that, uh, you, you really limit yourself to just what's in the hearing space as, uh, the, the decision can truly be overturned by a district court, and then we're back to square one. Uh, the final thing is, uh, decision making based on personal interest or personal opinions. Uh, for example, if a variance request came in and it was denied because the member of the variance board didn't like it, and that was the only reason why, that's not a basis for denial. I mean, any denial or approval has to have a code basis. So, um, you, you know, you could deny because you think that this doesn't match, X doesn't match Y criteria in the code. That's fine. But just to say, I don't like this application, uh, is not appropriate and, uh, not something that can be done. You, you also can't make, uh, decisions that are in your financial interests or your family's financial interests, which is also a conflict of interest issue. But I think those are, uh, pretty standard. Uh, i- in terms of ex parte contacts, going back there just a little bit, an idea of what these might be, uh, you visit the site and issue, and you run into the owner and ask some questions. You send emails about the project to, uh, citizens. You receive emails or letters from the public, and you don't share them with the town staff so that, or the city staff, so they can be shared with everyone else and the applicant. Uh, really just talking with the applicant, opponents, citizens outside of the hearing space is a big no-no. In the event an ex parte contact does occur, because you know, sometimes, uh, an applicant could be really keen on, uh, speaking with you about their application, and you just can't run away fast enough to, to get away from them. Uh, you let us know, and then we do a kind of back and forth to establish that the extent of the ex parte contact and whether or not it's disqualifying. And that's kind of a case by case determination. It's always important that if you are approaching the ex parte contact, you remind them, hey, I am on, you know, X body, and I can't speak to you about this, but I look forward to hearing about it during the hearing. Um, and to conclude there, a drive-by site visit. I know I said if you go to the site, you run into the owner, that's a no-no. But if you go to the site and check it out yourself, that's not an ex parte contact. That is always fine. Um, and just procedural stuff. You should refrain from signaling what you're gonna do before the testimony is complete. So if you've heard the staff presentation and you already look like you're ready to deny based on that before the applicant's gotten their chance to present, that's really not great, because that leads to the prejudgment issue we spoke about. Uh, in the event a hearing is continued, uh, don't attend and speak on the applicant. You know, if the playing commission had a, uh, app, uh, FTP application in front of it, and the hearing was continued to the next month, it would be inappropriate to go to the city council the, the next week and speak about that application during public comment, for example. Um, and o- obviously, that extends to, if the hearing is continued, you still don't speak to anyone outside of the hearing space. And as always, uh, you can speak with the city staff as long as they're not used for means of creating ex parte contacts. You wouldn't, you wouldn't ask the city staff to tell you what the applicants told them outs- outside of the hearing space, for example. Uh, i- in furthering these goals, we usually have scripts that we like to use. Uh, these announcements set the guidelines for what's about to occur. Uh, if there's a large number of folks that have come to public comment, you, uh, remind them of the limitations of public comment, that they get three minutes. You can ask them to not repeat prior testimony from an earlier speaker if you don't wanna listen to the same public comment over and over again. Of course, if they choose to repeat the exact same thing that the other person said, you need to be ready to listen if they choose to do so. Um, the public testimony is supposed to be directed towards the decision making body. So it's not really appropriate for that to be a question and answer space, uh, between the public and staff or the applicant. We always give some chance after public comments through to make some rebuttal testimony. Uh, a- and you don't want to make it s- make it seem like you don't wanna hear a certain form of testimony. You always wanna make people feel welcome and that they're wo- they're able to give whatever testimony they're willing to give. In terms of motions, there's usually a suggested motion in the packet. Uh, if you feel the motion doesn't reflect what, uh, testimony you've heard and what you feel the ultimate decision should be, uh, that's something that I can always help workshop, uh, i- if I'm at the hearing myself. Um, if not, uh, and maybe if you feel that motions have been a problem for your board in the past, it may not be helpful to provide more of a menu of, of, uh, motions going into the packet. And as I've stated, uh, you could get sued and lose if you deny something for, uh, personal feelings or because of the re-ex parte contacts or major conflicts of interest. But you probably won't get sued and lose if you deny something based on a code basis. So it's always within a board's rights to deny an application. You just need to point to a clear, uh, reason and, uh, legal basis for the denial. And, uh, I, I would say in most cases, the code language is flexible enough that in its interpretation, that you could probably get to a, a denial or an approval uh, if you articulate yourself well enough with your reasoning and have either approval or denial be defensible. Um, sometimes we look at conditions of approval, and those conditions, uh, can be, uh, permitted as long as they're linked to something in the code. You can't make up conditions as you go. You can't make up a condition that will vote yes if this house is painted pink. If there's no code basis that says you have to paint your house pink. Uh, if an applicant willingly and, let's say, uh, not under duress, offers to make their house pink, to make things easier for you, and you don't require it from them, you could accept that concession, and that's fine. But if they don't wanna make their house pink, you can't make them make their house pink to get an approval. Uh, if you track that. Ethics and conflicts of interest is always important. I kind of briefly touched on this at the beginning of the, of my spiel here. Um, a conflict of interest is when someone performs an addition, an official act directly and substantially affecting to their economic benefit, a business or other undertaking in which they either have a substantial financial interest or is engaged as counsel, consultant, representative, or agent. And a, uh, a, a conflict of interest really relies on whether or not something directly benefits you. Um, for example, I'll call out Uchiya. I remember we had the school district come in with something, and you told me you were an employee of the school district. Uh, just because you're an employee of somewhere doesn't create a conflict of interest, because, uh, the approval in that incident did not lead to a raise, promotion. It didn't benefit any member of your family. No one was contracted to do this work. So there, while you're related to the applicant in a, uh, in employment relationship, it's not a conflict of interest to participate in the discussion or vote on the application. Uh, in contrast, if there was a variance request and your, uh, brother-in-law was the contractor that would be performing the work on the proposed variance project, that would be a conflict of interest and, uh, something that would disqualify you from considering the application. If you do not disclose conflicts of interest and it goes, you go ahead and, let's say you vote yes and the, you know, the project's approved, and it's found out that there wasn't an existing conflict of interest, that will, in most cases, invalidate the decision of the board. So it is important to disclose conflicts of interest. I would say ninety-five percent of the time, someone says they think they have a conflict, they really don't. But the five percent that it, uh, could occur, it's important to know ahead of time. Um, for exam- I, I will give an example of, uh, um, a conflict of interest that occurred, uh, on city council. The mayor pro temp, he is the second in charge of the fire district, I believe, and the city was approving some more funding to go towards the fire district. And, uh, the mayor pro temp had to sit out on that discussion because it directly impacted his future employment if he, the fire district could not receive this funding. So that's, uh, where an employment relationship can lead to a conflict of interest. Um, other items on here that I wanna touch on are more, uh, general, uh, issues that don't just apply to quasi judicial decision making, and that is, um, the open meetings law and, uh, the Colorado Open Records Act. So the open meetings law requires that meetings are noticed, and the public has a chance to come to a meeting. Uh, a meet, a meeting is defined as three or more folks on a board getting together to, uh, talk about business. So if, uh, three of the members of the playing commission got together at a local coffee shop and they started talking shop about this upcoming, um, Wednesday, you know, tonight's meeting that occurred on Monday, that could be considered a, a legal meeting o- under the open meetings law because, uh, the members of the public were not able to attend that meeting. And I know it may sound silly, but, uh, we really do have clients where, uh, if members of the board wanna get together to, kinda talk shop, but, uh, at a coffee shop or pizza or bowling or whatever, we notice that, and the members of the public can come. Uh, at a coffee shop or pizza or bowling or whatever, we notice that and the members of the public can come from the. Uh, come from wherever they are and sit down at the coffee shop right next to you and hear your discussion, so. It's important to keep that in mind, uh, chance encounters and uh, purely social gatherings are allowed. But of course, you would not want to be in a position where you're meeting with members of your board. And there's three or more of you and you're claiming it's a chance social encounter. But maybe a citizen recognized you all were together and they heard you talking about uh, business that would be. Uh, related to your more official capacities. Um. That's really the big open meetings law item, it's really these kind of small gatherings that can be considered meetings. The other item there is uh, emails, so if you have an email chain. And it's uh, three or more members on the email chain, that can be considered an illegal meeting under the open meetings law, so. Uh, we always encourage that if a mass communication goes out to your board, you don't reply all on that communication. If you have a direct question for, let's say Dylan sends you, sends your whole board an email and you have a question for Dylan. Make sure you reply and you ask that question directly to Dylan. Uh, because before you know it, you reply all and then it's snowballed into ten emails and possibly a meeting that is not noticed.
Can, am I able to send as staff, staff can send any communication to everyone?
Yep.
Or even if it was like, hey, what's this? You know, we talk about a document, I can send that out after a meeting and it wouldn't be considered a meeting, is that right?
Yeah, because it's not generating discussion amongst the board, it's you, it's like, um. You're basically sending a letter out, right, versus creating a more formal space to discuss business.
Right.
Um, so that's kind of the two big open meeting law items is email chains and. Three or more members getting together. The only other item I keep in my presentation before I shut up and let you ask questions. Is the Colorado Open Records Act, uh, I believe mayor, everyone that's on a border commission gets a city email.
Yes.
So in your city email, uh, except uh, a few statutory exceptions that are. Uh, very particular and rarely apply, I would say. Every communication that you send from your uh, city of Idaho Springs email address is a public record. And can be uh, requested and given to any member of the public that. Asked for these records and there's a very quick turnaround on those, so. Um, I always caution folks to really be careful with how you communicate over email and what you say. Uh, this gets sticky in the prejudgment item I spoke about last time. Uh, for example, if you uh, i- i- email correspondence back and forth with. Anyone, you spoke about an application and said, wow, I really just didn't like this application. That email that is openly uh, discoverable by anyone that wants it can really come back to bite you in a bad way. So you always wanna be careful with what you're saying and really. Uh. I I would say limit yourself in your communications and be brief with what you have to say. And just remember that uh, in in. All items when you're sending an email, I would caution before you had sent to think, if I announce this on. Right in front of city hall and the whole city, how would they feel about me saying what I'm saying here? Um, like I said, there's really no way to keep these communications out, there's very few exceptions that. Permit not disclosing records and uh, even. For example, if you have me as city attorney CC'd on the email, sometimes that doesn't even. Help, right? I mean, that doesn't automatically create attorney client privilege, that is one of the exceptions. And it will keep some communications from being discoverable, but just by nature of. CCing one of the city attorneys on a communication doesn't mean necessarily that uh, it will come out and be released publicly further on down the line. Um, I think I've really touched on. Most things I. Look for in these sorts of presentations, so. I will open it up for questions and if we don't have questions, then we could just hang out. Mayor?
Nick, uh, a thorny one, uh, that's really gotten crazy lately are these first amendment tests.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Little Lions, Colorado, right? I mean, their downtown is like two blocks long. They're, they're just trying to have a council meeting, somebody zooms in like we're doing tonight and they have a pornography bomb. And uh, while I think I know how uh, what Nick would advise with this, I will tell you it's very problematic. Uh, just they lost their Zoom and they played months trying to get it back. And there's other crazy ones recently, we had a, a city where somebody came up. And was testifying like with some type of a adhesive on their hand. So it was there for the whole three minutes. And then you couldn't drag him off, right? I mean, they were literally, so uh, the mayor took a break. And uh, the police chief got a string or something between a saw the hand off. Now, I'm just saying, we, we are getting really, really out there with some of these first amendment tests and. I don't think most of us are ready for it, I, I just was curious to hear uh, your thoughts on that.
Sure, so yeah, I mean, it's. It's tough, right? I mean, if someone wants to come to public comment and say the most. Uh, hateful things you can imagine, you really have to let them, uh, hate speeches, protected speech, so uh. Pick your group of people if they just wanted to go off and say terrible things for three minutes straight, you'd have to let them now, you set. Time, place, manner restrictions, you've set the three minute uh, limit. But when it comes to what folks want to say, especially in general public comment during your meetings. You're very limited in what you can uh, not have them say. And in the case of like, the mayor was bringing up where someone. Uh, you know, won't leave or. Glues themselves to the podium, uh, the advice there is generally, and it, you know, it's always very sticky is. The board, the uh. The uh, yeah, I was, I didn't. Uh, you know, the board or the attorney or manager, they don't really get involved and you kind of make that into a. PD item, right? You wouldn't, the mayor directing the chief to come over and remove this person. That's more of a restriction of free speech than saying, hey, we're gonna take a break and. Now we're gonna look at this more as a legal issue and uh, that's. Uh, that's uh, really how to handle one of those, but like I said, if you. Really on podium, as long as they, uh, you know, keep within their three minutes, they can say whatever they want. And it's important to remember that um, it's. It's not something that you can really fight back on, uh. You just kind of have to sit there and take it and that's the nature of the beast, I would say. And uh, i- if it turns into a recurring problem, then you look into maybe, you know. Removing Zoom as a meeting option or changing things around, I know uh. Some clients let it uh. That they have removed general public comment altogether and restrict it to uh, each agenda item gets its own, but. Um, for now, yes, if you uh, i- if you have someone in public comments saying something you don't like or is uh. Uh, true hate speech, you really do have to sit there and listen to it, so uh, that's my uh, take on that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So this is all about city business, what about privately owned company? Um, as a board, uh, in some of these things, you're talking like the three or more people get together. And also with uh, email, let's see, you have official emails like Tommy Nakamura, because some people who have um, official duties or don't have a company email.
Yeah, I mean, this is all just local governments, uh, incapacity is a local government official, part of the board, commission, uh, employee. The like Colorado Open Records Act applies to pretty much anyone with a government email. But for example, it does not apply to me because I'm not a employee of the city.
Now, uh, there are a few people, a lot of our correspondents, like, hey, here's a meeting on this date, goes out to personal emails. Um, if that is the case, would those personal emails be subject then to? And would the scope only be?
Yes, possibly, uh, I would recommend that you transact city business on your city emails as to avoid any uh. Disclosure of personal emails that you wouldn't wanna get out, usually limited to, you know, whatever you're discussing. Um. In those. C- you know, city focused emails in your personal email, but sometimes things slip by, right? I mean, you couldn't. You wouldn't, the basis of a core request usually is pretty specific, right, to, they would request. All emails sent by the board from this date to this date related to this topic. So if that's confined to just your city email address, then you don't have to worry about personal emails possibly being a part of that.
Good question, um. What's, is there any issues or discuss the intersection of kind of like Roberts rules? Um, in meeting processes and any, where they may get into any legal issues regarding that?
Well, I firstly, I mean, with those procedural rules, we would have to know which board, you know, some board had, some boards do not adopt. Formal rules, some boards have a rule book that's, you know, one page, other board, you know, like. I'm not even sure if the city council, if they've adopted Roberts rules and what they've adopted is their rules of procedure. But um, with those types of questions, those are usually addressed within the meeting itself where you can kind of have the attorney. Uh, work through how to take a motion, um. How to proceed procedurally, but it's. Usually we don't get too deep into the Roberts rules and procedural stuff unless it's a super uh, contentious topic that. Um, where opinions are all over the place and it's tough finding a motion that works or. Uh, people are flip flopping on issues back and forth, I'd say.
Uh, if I take notes on a matter, uh, are those notes discoverable?
Yeah. Yeah.
That, and I'm not required to retain them though, right?
No, yeah, no, but if you, um, for example, if you kept a. Yeah, if you kept like online notes or if you created a word document for notes.
Or, or even just. Notes in a notebook.
Yeah.
For my own use.
Yeah, they could be, yeah.
Recommendation on keeping them or not?
Um. I, I think you, I would worry more about uh, what you say at a meeting. Being problematic and what you take in notes, right? And if you articulate yourself and make it a city that's uh, sensible. Then that's more important than whatever you scribble down in your notes, is, so I'd say it's more of a personal call and uh, up to your discretion.
Uh, when you were talking about the emails and the potential for an open meetings violation.
Yep.
Email this text in that same, so if like there's three or more of you on a text chain.
Yes.
You're running in the same.
Correct, yeah, don't do a text chain in there, I should be. Or like, hey, uh, a Zoom call would also. But especially in today's world, right? You wouldn't wanna. Really any sort of gathering where three or more of uh, board get together. And discuss business in any sort of capacity or medium would possibly be considered a meeting.
What's the notice period then? Like to notice a meeting, so.
Uh, I think it's forty-eight hours, I honestly, I, I never noticed the meeting, so I wouldn't know off the top of my head.
I think our notice is only twenty-four hours for a public meeting, so as long as you notify it the day before. Whatever that, like Nick said, even if it's a bowling party or something, like we do a notice for the Christmas party every year, for example, or holiday party. Even though presumably there's no official business discussed.
Correct, yeah, so that's, that's a good example, right? So you've noticed the Christmas party, you're gonna, we're all gonna be together. And you really can't say for certain, you, you wanna play it safe, right? You don't want everyone to be in a room and. Chances are, if the whole city council's together and, or the Christmas party. Probably a pretty good chance that some sort of council business is gonna get discussed in one way or another, so you just always play it safe with that sort of thing.
Does that just, if you gather with three or more and discuss it, is that just discussing with most recently on the agenda or?
Anything that could be uh, related to official business, so. I, you know, it, it really is okay if it's a purely social outing. And people do that, right? I mean, we have counselors that go on like rafting trips together, I know we've had. Uh, but we're not here, I don't know about here, but uh, for another client, counselors will go on rafting trips together.
Mm-hmm.
And you have to take them at their word that, you know, it's purely social outing and of course, it truly is, but. Like I said, it, it gets a little murky when you're all three out and you're out drinking margaritas together and all of a sudden. Someone's there and hears you talking about uh, comp plan or the application that's coming up and. There's a real basis to say that, you know, this was a meeting to discuss business.
Um, I don't think we have to email.
Yeah, I made a note to look into that because I know I don't coordinate with anyone via city emails, I don't know if they actually are creating. Okay, I don't, I would guess that every single person in this room is not using.
None of my four has.
So, um.
We can, we can fix that, it's cheap enough and easy enough.
Yeah, well, um.
I have to say Wonder approached me on doing that and I have to say that I just.
Alright, we'll, we'll fix that.
Yeah, she did want me to try to do it, right?
You know, it's not the biggest risk in the world that if you're using your personal email, that all of your emails are gonna get released under Cora, but. By only using a city email, it effectively like eliminates that risk.
Right, well, I made a note to make sure that if they're not set up, that we as staff set them up and then. I'll let everyone know what their city email is and then you can let me know if you. Want to just use that and have to check an email now or. I'm still happy to send it out to personal emails, I suppose, if you're willing to take that risk, but um. I'll have that set up as soon as I can, it should be just like a couple of days.
Cool.
Another question, what, um, how does governmental immunity act with elected officials?
Sure, so that's a good question. Uh, I don't really dive into that too much on this one because the governmental immunity is more of a council issue. I would say being the one that's uh, taking official actions. But you really, especially as boards, you don't really have to worry about being sued in your personal capacity for uh, anything that occurs as a. Uh, result of your decision and really here, uh, I can't even think of something that would. Act or, you know, or create a, a liability issue for a board, I mean, it's really like. Um, more dangerous conditions, uh, in public facilities, which is more of a city question than. Uh, more subsidiary boards, I would say.
I was trying to remember why a couple of years ago, the mayor of Cedar Ridge got outwatered for something, I can't remember what it was.
I, yeah, I'm not sure, yeah.
On that same note, do cities have like DNO insurance for this situation?
Like. There's an insurance pool that uh, you kind of pay into the cities then. It's called SIRS and you pay in and there's insurance payouts and there's uh, they can assign. High level litigators to handle the nastier lawsuits that might uh, come across the. The, the year as it goes on, I, I, I don't know how many the city has on now, but I'm assuming there's probably one SIRS case going on at a time.
Yeah, Nick, I, I would just say even for uh, small towns and cities. Fortunately, it's a pretty sue happy society and. You know, there's almost always gonna be somebody that tripped on a sidewalk or.
Yeah.
You know, we, we, most years have a couple, uh, and that's not unusual.
Yeah. And that's not something that, once it gets to that point, that's not really something our office handles because it's more of like a specialized litigation. And it's also something that uh, SIRS handles really, they just assign an attorney to represent the city. And the city attorney works in conjunction with them to help, I'd say, manage. The case, but the city attorney doesn't do much more. The case, but the city attorney doesn't do much more than that and also acts as kind of a. A vessel for communications between the council and uh, the assigned representative since. You know, the council is usually a lot more comfortable with the city attorney they know versus the. Attorney that maybe they've never met before, that's just been assigned to handle this one item.
One more, um, can you clarify, when you were talking, uh, when you were talking about expat communication?
Yep.
You said something about like if you can run away fast enough.
Yeah.
Um. And I, I'm not sure if I got confused or what, but. Do you, so if that happens to me, someone tells me something, I'm like, oh, I don't wanna hear or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, do I communicate that with you and then you can share with everyone and that makes it not an issue?
So. I- in this scenario, right, let's say you're walking downtown and someone. The applicant comes up to you, I mean, it doesn't have to be the applicant, but we'll say the applicant comes up to you and says, oh my god, like. You need to approve this because X, Y, Z, and you're like, I really can't talk about this. You know, see you at the hearing and they go, actually, but you don't understand, like, this is so great and this is why and this is why it's. Needs to be approved. At that point, you would contact our office and then we would probably have a Q and A with you. Uh, during the meeting itself where you discover, kind of. You establish by the Q and A that you weren't biased by this discussion. You describe what happened and you feel that uh, just because this communication happened. Doesn't mean that you're leaning one way or another. Um, now, of course, if the, for example, if it got really uncomfortable for you and you just, the person wouldn't let it go. And then you're like, you know, I just, I feel really weird about this application, I just. It's tough to say that I wouldn't just vote no because of just how bad of a taste this person left in my mouth. Then you'd have to step down and not participate in the discussion. It's really kind of a case by case determination, I would say.
Okay, but the information that I was given doesn't necessarily need to be shared with everybody else in the board?
We would share it in, during the Q and A, like it would.
Okay, so this will happen when everybody's here, it wouldn't be.
Yes, yes, like that's, it's kind of. Whether or not you're disqualified from uh. Participating, that could be determined by our office beforehand, by you just speaking with us. But the actual determination isn't official until we've got it on the record because, you know, it's important that we. Establish on the record what happened, why you're not participating or what happened and why it's still okay for you to participate. Yeah.
Now, in the past, the city procedure for board members and even council lids, they should go through the administrator first.
Yep.
And the administrator contacts the attorney, not us directly.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so. For clarification, for U T, you wouldn't contact Nick, you would contact Andy and then Andy would contact, yeah.
Not to say that you couldn't reach out to me personally, but like. Even if you do, all that's gonna happen is I'm gonna take that email and forward it to Andy and be like, hey, just so you know, this is what's going on, so. But you can always hope, reach out to me as well.
Right.
Sadie, you know, if you're gonna ask me for your board. Yeah. Ask along. Well, that's all I got, so unless there's more questions, we're gonna hang out for another.
Raised hand online, Mike, are you?
Ye- yes, I have a question, um, it's not unusual in a hearing. That say the applicant. Says, I'm willing to make these changes to the application, to the project. If that will meet your conditions, is there a point at which? That should be actually a, a continued item and maybe even renoticed because the change is significant?
Tough to say, that's more of a case by case determination, but kind of just peeling back what you're speaking to. If an applicant is willing to make certain changes to the applicant, to the project itself. Uh, to kind of better satisfy the board and these changes are uh, code required. Then there's two ways of handling, I think both are fine, it's really. Tough to say which would be the best option ahead of time, but. If they're willing to make these changes and these changes just satisfy the conditions that are proposed. Then you could just approve with the conditions and if they make the changes and the conditions are uh, met, then there's no problem whatsoever. If. The board feels, still feels though, like they don't wanna have ten conditions out there for approval. And it needs to be a tighter application, then yes, you could continue and ask for some resubmitted materials. And those resubmitted materials would basically get them to approval without the messiness of the conditions.
Okay, I've, I've, a couple of times I've run into a situation where a project gets changed like that. Gets approved or acted on in that meeting. And then a neighbor comes back and says, well, I didn't know it was going to be that kind of project.
Uh. Yeah, I mean.
Go ahead.
Uh, if the project is seriously fundamentally changed. Then I think that's more of a code question as to whether or not they need to resubmit their materials. Um, but. Uh, to that, to the neighbor's response, I'd say, you know, you had your chance to come to the meeting and see what would happen and. If you're surprised by that result, that's because you weren't at the meeting.
Okay. Add one more question?
Sure.
Um. What if after the public comment has been closed and it moves to discussion at the board? And a new matter is brought up in during that discussion that was not in any of the documents? Was not in any of the testimony, should the hearing be reopened for comment? To respond to just that new point?
It could be, but it's really. It's really best practice to before closing the hearing. Make sure that any of these lingering questions or items are brought up and addressed. Because it does get a little messy having to reopen a closed hearing. Uh, you really wanna keep it to the, to make sure that when. The hearing's closed and you're not hearing from anyone else and it's just the board deliberating amongst themselves, that. There's really been no stone left unturned, I'd say.
So at that point. Is the board, the chairperson or whomever should ask, does anyone have any questions before we close public comment?
That's exactly what we look for, yes, you want. And yes, because once the hearing is closed, it really should be. Well, I think the decision should be X because of Y. The talking point shouldn't be, well, what about this, what about that, it should be more. Statements made during the deliberation and not more questions.
Okay, and what, one last question. Are, once it's gone to board discussion, are straw poles okay?
Oh, like to get the temperature of what everyone's feeling?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, y- you could do that, but also, nothing says you couldn't just take a motion and. Put it on the table and vote on it and if that motion dies, you take a new motion, I, it's kind of. It, it's really a matter of style, uh, another thing that sometimes. Uh, you can do is you can put a motion on a table for uh, approval. And then if folks think that conditions need to be added on, you can amend that motion for approval to kind of. Uh, I, it's, my boss says it's like putting ornaments on a Christmas tree, you have the main motion, that's the Christmas tree. And the conditions are the ornaments that you can add on, that way uh. You're not sitting there developing this super long list of conditions and instead you've got this motion for approval. And then each person that feels that these conditions need to be added can have that motion to amend. And then the board can vote on each and every condition that's proposed. It, at the same time, makes things more complicated and simpler than somehow. Anything else?
Again, I wanna thank everybody.
Thank you.
I knew Nick was gonna do a great job and uh, good questions too, uh, for the folks, so uh. Uh, now we had a lot in an hour, we got a, a few minutes to get back to you and I can't thank you enough.
Thanks for coming out.
Be done. Be done, are you um?
Before planning commission.
I'm not, yeah. Yeah, I've been by, chat about uh.
One, we could.
I'm.
Cindy.
I'm.
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 I'm. People with the Argo stuff and they wanted to meet Scott and Andrew. So I went there with them and Scott goes, well, let's walk over to the top Tap House so he could see how the Tap Houses run with bartender and stuff. And it was trivia night. It was sex trivia.
Um, so anyway.
Um.
Whenever we're ready.
Okay. I think the Ethan.
S.
Oh, she's got her play.
Is there, we're only in studies or work session, right? So, all right, just for uh. Do we have a new alternate or we didn't swear?
Uh Judy is going to be our new alternate. She was appointed by council, but we've not yet done swearing yet.
Okay. So just because I don't know if we've addressed this since Katie and Jefferson joined. When there is a quasi judicial action and you are an alternate. Uh, you're always able to participate on regular agenda items like it's anyone's, you know, right to do. Uh, like you're basically a regular board member, you still vote and you can still offer thoughts. But when it comes to quasi judicial actions, I usually ask that you don't really participate, you just watch because you don't. You don't want further down the line, uh, the allegation that the board's decision was influenced by a non-voting member. So just like for, uh, if, if we have a full board and the alternate's not filling in in place of a, a regular member. You don't speak if it's a, you know, very like an FDP hearing. But if it's like tonight and, uh, well, everyone is here because you've got Kent online.
Yeah.
So if Kent wasn't actually online and wasn't here at all and you were sitting in for Kent, then you'd be good to go to talk and fully participate.
Okay, so you're saying tonight, cause Kent is online, he doesn't?
No, 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 he.
I mean, in the work session part he does, but in the voting he doesn't.
Voting, yeah, but he could still.
But he could still offer commentary and thoughts on it because it's not a quasi judicial act, it's legislative.
Right.
So just when it's, basically only when it's a hearing with someone coming asking us for something is when you would, uh. Not be participating if you're acting as an alternate. Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, so now I'm confused. So did they? So, yeah, because we, we haven't had them vote in when we vote on anything on the agenda.
If they're, so like tonight Jefferson's just in his alternate capacity because all five are here. So he's not voting, but he can talk about all the agenda items. Yeah.
Okay.
But if I weren't here and Jefferson was in my place, he would go.
He'd be voting, yes. And if, if there was a hearing, he would participate and render a decision on the application. Yeah.
Yeah. And then that book is. She brought it to us. We were talking about this after the meeting last time.
And you can sit here with us for the work session, right?
Well, we have a regular meeting.
Yeah, she's sworn in, yeah.
Okay, no one's. So excited.
And the books are from Saul.
Square in tonight, but Linda is out of town and she has to do the swearing in is my understanding. Or at least, you know, we'll just know how to do the swearing in.
Request to do it or something.
That's my understanding and as the deputy city clerk, she would.
Yeah.
Do that. So, um, anyway.
Okay, so I'll call to order the regular meeting for.
Well, uh, we are, we're work session now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a couple of items that.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
We're kind of doing it out of order tonight because we had the training and I figured it would be best to just do the training opportunities.
And yes.
We've got our work session first, so I guess if you're all good, I will hop right in. Um, okay, and Kent, you can hear us all right? I know you're muted and all that.
Yeah, I'm good.
Perfect. Okay, so I put two items on this work session to briefly discuss. Um, the first is a follow-up on last month's discussion about the efficiency, efficiency units specifically. And then also a bit of discussion on housing broadly. Um. Doing some research over the last month or so, um, I attempted to address all of the concerns that came out of last meeting. The big concern was one, um. You know, our definition which states, um, dwelling unit contain not more than one room or enclosed floor space arranged for living, eating and sleeping purposes. The question was, what is space arranged for eating?
Judy, we might be shut the door. Thank you.
Um, so yeah, floor space arranged for eating. And so I did some research, I talked to our building official. And my understanding of the issue is that you would have, basically from building code perspective for it. Cause these aren't dwelling units, it would have to have some sort of, like at least a sink plus a fridge plus. Some sort of cooking appliance, but it wouldn't have to be a fixed cooking appliance necessarily. And so the question that kind of came up, like when we talked about extended stay hotels was, we want a fixed cooking appliance. Um, in the kitchen, this wouldn't necessarily have that requirement as currently written. And so, but it would require a separate sink, so you kind of create this space that. Could be you, you know, you could plug something in and use it, or you could bring in a stove, or you could bring in an air fryer or whatever. The other key thing with this versus, uh, like our extended stay hotels was that, um. Here you're doing a change of user, you're building a new unit, so you do have to have upgraded electrical. And so by having updated electric, electrical, the units are likely to be able to handle appliances being plugged in as opposed to. You know, requiring a stove because that's the only way we can ensure there isn't going to be this, you know, horrible fire hazard. So. I think on that issue, my. Request for direction, I suppose, is, is that suitable? You know, that they have this space that kind of is per building code has to be defined sort of that the meeting space with this. Fridge and a sink, but doesn't necessarily have like a range now that.
So the discussion we had last time was, we didn't like the words eating space because that could be just a table. It didn't mean everything. So, but then after we talked, one of the triggers that still makes it where you can't just take a room and do it. Is that you have to have two sinks. So it means you have to have a sink for your bathrooms and you have to have a sink. For your kitchen, but the kitchen doesn't have to have a stove. So the, the question is, so to me, I felt comfortable that that covers it now, meaning they can't just make it a table and chairs. And that's considered an eating space for a dwelling efficiency unit. Because they have to have the two sinks. So now the thing is the wording, do we want it to have eating space or the word kitchen space? Is kind of what you're. Because it doesn't define kitchen, kitchenette, cooking facility or a space for eating. Where are we back to being comfortable with eating space?
Right. I think the question is, we don't define kitchen anyway, so. But per building code, like if you have this dwelling unit, even if it's a dwelling efficiency unit, it needs to have these minimum facilities regardless. So does it matter how it's defined? Like, does it need a specific definition that called out a kitchen or something like that? Or are we okay to proceed with the, the proposed ordinance, at least on this subject, without the changes? Cause we're, from last month, the ordinance proposed in the packet hasn't been updated in that respect.
Um, so I noticed that you mentioned about the building code and it says, uh, cooking appliance, a sink and refrigerator. Um, why, what if we were to change the definition instead of eating space, cooking space? Would that make it more straightforward and the building code requires, says that anyway, so. Will that make it, you know, cause I feel like, I personally feel that we don't need to say it needs to have a kitchen, cause I don't care how they sign it, you know? I'm like, there's so many new designs these days that it doesn't need to be a kitchen, a special, uh, space for that. As long as there's space for cooking, even if they pull it out of a drawer or whatever, you know?
So does the building code say cooking space?
Well, the building code.
Cooking appliance. So, sorry.
Yeah, they basically say that there has to be a place where you can prepare food. Uh, and I'm paraphrasing, I suppose. I, I would have to pull up the, I don't have it in front of me, but essentially the way it's framed doesn't. The way the building code is, is I don't know precisely what it says, but it would be that the space needs to have the ability to kind of support. Cooking, you know, and eating and all of that. I, I can pull it up as, as we talk and see.
It's someone on the document that I copy.
Did you want to look at one of them? You see right there? Um, I, I'm comfortable with it because I think we can cover it because of the sinks, but also. I agree with using the terminology that's out of the building code, but then you also, the building code could change in five years and they could change the word. So as long as the intent is all the same, I, I'm comfortable with whatever words we come up with. If it's called eating space, I remember I was totally opposed at the wording eating space, but now I'm comfortable with it because. Uh, the two sinks is what's going to limit them or make them have to do it right. Let's put it that way.
Cindy, I agree with you on all of that. Uh, it seems like if the building code already sets the minimum for kind of what's acceptable. Uh, then it seems like we're probably covered.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of after discussing it and reading through it with Dylan, that's the conclusion I came to too.
Uchi, to answer your question, I don't have the like IRC in front of me, but in my correspondence with the building official, she said. If. A space is being used as dwelling units, then there are minimum requirements for permanent means for cooking facilities, sanitation. Which is bathrooms and sinks and habitable speed, sleeping space. And so of course, again, she doesn't define cooking facilities to mean necessarily like a fixed. You know, gas line for a stove or something, but you, it's a space that's permanently built where you can cook. I think is how I would interpret it based on what she's told me. And so again, you know, if you want to have it say cooking, I think if, if we did say, you don't want it to say eating space, it should say cooking space or something to that effect. Then we would just, I guess, we wouldn't take action tonight because.
We could.
Why, why couldn't you? Yeah.
We could move to recommend approval with that change or we could just change the ordinance and the council to propose change. Yeah, I mean, the only thing is we would have to, you know, the. The change isn't to what's already in the ordinance, we'd have to add a section to the ordinance, ending the definition, which.
That's my thought, Ken, that I guess that could still be done, right?
It's fine. I mean, I, I don't know if it's necessary. I mean, it's.
I don't see the word eating in here anywhere that you would change it.
In the, uh, the definition in the, uh, code, it says. A dwelling efficiency unit is a dwelling unit containing not more than one room or enclosed floor space arranged for living, eating and sleeping purposes. So, you know, you could mess with that eating term, uh, but I don't know if you'd have to, it sounds like the building code kind of has it covered. Uh, and I don't think building codes change that much, you know, every time a new addition comes out.
I suppose you'd have to, building, residential building code would have to say, well, we no longer require, you know, dwelling unit, uh, like cooking facilities.
Correct. And if that change was made in the residential building code, that would be something that maybe the council would be made aware of. And the council could have meant the building, that, that portion of the code to when they adopt the new code.
Okay, so what does it take to change the definition, to change the word eating to cooking and changing and doing it and getting it passed through?
Uh, all that would take is.
Sounds like that's what we'd like, right? I like that.
So you would just have to move to approve. I don't really, I don't want to say it right now because I think it's more appropriate for when we get to that agenda item in the regular meeting, but I'll have the motion ready to go.
Good. Is everyone good with, I, I think that's great. Then we can move forward and get this done tonight.
Yep.
Kent?
Yeah, absolutely. Great call. I don't think the wording changes really matters, but I fully support it.
Perfect. Okay, um, that's good. The other thing that I discussed is like, well, how is this actually different from a hotel room? That was a concern. I think one of the big things is that if that required, you know, a hotel room obviously doesn't have, have any sort of eating. Facilities it also, but it could. Um, I think the key thing is that you would need to have, um, need our square footage requirement unless we change that in the future. Cause right now, our average hotel room size is under four hundred square feet and we require efficiency units to be squared square feet. And I think that is something we've talked about, maybe that should change, but currently it has not. So, um. This would definitely, if, if it were approved with the change, uh, to the definition, I think we would be safe. From talking with building official and research and whatnot, we'd be pretty safe to know that if someone had an existing hotel, let's say, and they wanted to convert these units. They have to ensure that it's four hundred square feet per unit or they got variance, it would have to have these cooking facilities. And it would have to meet the proper building code for residential because, uh, after the building official, and I only have this in report, but. When we were talking about extended stay hotels, it came up, if you're converting to residential use, you go from this R1. Building code type to an R2 building code type, and that's just for occupancy. I don't really know the difference too much. It's not like our zoning districts, but. They would definitely have to do some conversion to an existing building to meet those requirements unless it's already a residential house. So. Um.
But that's not on this ordinance. You don't need that decision on that.
Right.
Okay.
Right, um, so I won't really go into it too much on all the other things that I've put into my report about the square footage sizes. Uh, unless folks want to talk about like square footage or ADUs or like co, co-living sort of definitions. But. What I've kind of found from looking through things and chatting with some visually and all that is that. There's a lot going on in town at the moment that may change our housing needs. For example, the football field development that has one hundred nineteen units ranging from studios to four bedrooms. Potentially eventually the Soa Creek Island, single family, um, the adoption of our housing authority, which have, actually have their first meeting. Uh, just last week, last week to get it started on setting up, that it seems like. The efficiency unit discussion obviously has been relatively quick going through, but the rest of these may be better off waiting until we have like the housing authority established. And some more information from comp plan and that before moving on. Sounded like folks generally were okay with maybe hitting pause a little bit until we have more information. But I wanted to just confirm, you know, in a meeting that folks would be okay with that.
Okay, I was one of those that was comfortable with that because of those one hundred and nineteen units going in and the potential of the housing development. Um, that's going to house a lot of people, which, you know, what more of a need is there at this point that we're not aware of yet? Um, we know that, I mean, we'll see how fast the apartments fill up. So I was kind of comfortable with pausing on everything, getting this part done and then just seeing where it goes.
I'm fine with me too. Um, the only thing that I think of that could, uh, all our program could affect. Um, um, is that people that live here, they have lived here, they, they are trying to, you know, here and maybe they're not able to afford it. If we were able to implement some kind of option for them to be able to. Transform or build an ADU in their property where maybe they can move into and so they can rent their house for, you know?
I don't think we're limiting that, are we? We have ADU stuff in place. The problem with ADU stuff is going to be.
Yeah, it's like to make it easier for.
Building codes, the setbacks and stuff.
But at the same time, I mean, that's the only thing I think of that could be important, but at the same time, I agree that it's probably smart to wait and see what happens, especially a comp plan as well and all that.
Well. I could just, I'll, I'll transition very quickly into the next topic. We, I do think one of, I'm compiling survey questions at the moment that will have to be part of it is getting served without folks. And I have a few questions about ADUs on there to try to get, you know, like if there were incentives for ADUs where let's say you waived tap fees. Or you reduced parking or you reduce setbacks or there was, um. Prefabs or approved plans that you could just take and build, would you be interested in building an ADU? You know, if it was free of cost, would you consider it and those sorts of things? I think ADUs are definitely one, since we already have it in the code, that it would be. I think beneficial to be working on, um, to picking them up because I would guess in town right now, we, I don't have a hundred percent certainty. But I don't, I'd say we only have maybe a dozen or so at most. Um. And it seems like kind of low hanging fruit if we could get another dozen in the next ten years.
So you want to address that when you're doing the survey for the comp plan?
Well, I.
Those questions in that?
I think I, I certainly will have those questions, but I'd be, I'd be okay to just start working more on ADUs as well if we make it.
Dylan, I think we need to keep working on stuff like a, a, a pause on some of the more urgent, oh, we need to make new housing building happen. Makes sense to me, but, but other things like researching ADUs, investigating the needs of people in general, I think definitely needs to continue.
Yeah, I'm fine with moving forward with the ADU stuff. I mean. Um, it was more coming up with. Of changing a lot of the terminologies and stuff like that, that we had talked about. Okay, does that give you enough direction?
I think so.
Does it agree?
I'll.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you also mentioned like.
Yeah, and you also mentioned like there are four. Things that could happen with the ADU regulations that are easy, right, the first four items that of out of the six.
Sure, uh, at least ones that wouldn't require like a huge change to.
Yeah.
Code, I guess.
My only thought on that was, would it be possible to say that? You can reduce setbacks and all those cool things that are easy to do. If you're building ADU for housing.
Right.
Only, not for like whatever ADU. Cause we don't necessarily wanna just. Have people just have a bunch of storage.
Like a storage.
Yeah, right?
Right, that's. A good point that I should bring up, so that's a good question just broadly about any of these changes, let's say we keep moving forward, it sounds like. Uchi, at least you would say we would only relax these standards if the person agrees through uh. Probably a signed agreement to say. I will use this for housing, it will be a long-term rental either for family or. For, you know, someone who lives in the community, um, that is one I think where. The housing authority would be helpful to say, will they be administering that program and checking to make sure that. Those ADUs are used properly or. You know, I could do it, I can't imagine there would be more than. Even if there was fifty, I could monitor fifty ADUs, but. Enforcement is definitely the most difficult part with that, because you, how do you say? You could require a lease, you know, or something that's or an affidavit saying. Me, um. You have to do this and they have to provide a lease or they have to provide something, but I'd be curious as that. Would that be the good direction to go? I know a lot of communities do it that way. And right now we allow an ADU anywhere, but it could be a guest house, it could be a storage, it could be just an extra bedroom with a kitchen in it, so. I can look into that.
Yeah, it sounds like moving forward with. Or ADUs for living space, not stored space.
Yeah, I think it's tough when. I know a lot of communities will say. Summit County is a Breckenridge are very strict, they say if you build an ADU, it has to be rented, and if you're not renting it, then you're going to get code enforcement. And we're going to force you to rent it. One way or the other, and then other places like Denver or Silverdorn or Dillon say. You can leave it vacant or you can rent it. You don't have to be renting it, like Summit County says if you're not, I think it's ninety days, it might be sixty days, like if it's vacant for more than sixty days. You have to notify the county and the county will help you find someone to rent it.
Yeah, I don't think we wanna go that, because what if you're building it for your mother-in-law? Not gonna. Want them to enforce you having to rent it, well, you rent it to your mother-in-law for a dollar, I guess, or.
Right, well, and what they basically say is it has to be occupied. And so like you could say, hey, you know, friend, live here for free, you work in town. I don't care, or rent it for five thousand dollars, you know, whatever, but the problem would be you say you have the mother-in-law. And then you get divorced and you kick out the mother-in-law and your husband. You would still have, you would then have to find someone to rent that space, otherwise, or you'd have to like tear out the kitchen. And that happened quite a lot, whereas the alternative would be. And I think we would probably wanna go this direction, because that's quite strict. Quite strict would be, you can leave it vacant, you can rent it long-term, you can have it occupied by a family member, but. Then it makes it tough, because then someone would say, well, it's just vacant, but then they still use it for their like guests.
Well, and it's strict, but if you're getting perks around it by any means, then the purpose of this is to.
True.
Is to, like, the purpose we're talking about is to fill these, right, is to provide housing in some capacity. If you build it and you get perks from it, but then you're not using it for the purpose of it.
Right, if you're getting a free tap fee.
Or, yeah, anything, parking, anything that comes with it, it just seems a little way to get around all of that, and now we have an extra parking spot.
I guess those are all the things we'll figure out with the.
Well, the same with short-term rentals too, like an Airbnb, right?
Cause they're only allowed fifteen licenses.
Right, so that kicks in on top of that, then to stop that happening, but do we need to protect the ADUs and short-term rentals as well?
Well, an ADU per our current short-term regulations, you you can only rent out your primary residence. As an ADU technically, so either when you're out of town, you can rent it out or you have like a slightly separate space. You know, like a basement or whatever, but like if you have an ADU and it's specifically an ADU, it's not supposed to be a short-term rental already. But I think Katie, your point is good that if. If we're giving you something in order to build it, then it, then I think being stricter is fine, Summit County is strict even if you build it. With no incentives, which is probably too strict, you know.
So also if there's no restrictions, how do you get around it not being short-term rentals, right? Some people has an ADU in the back and all of a sudden you're just flipping it as often as you can.
Yeah.
But then there's like the enforcement piece too, which is where we need the county housing authority.
Yeah. But we already have ADUs that are being rented out.
Well, I was there's something out there, I'm not sure that I have a problem with. An ADU being used as an Airbnb, the same way I have a problem with a primary housing unit. I'm not saying we should explicitly allow it, but if somebody's doing it, I'm a little less bothered. Than a whole house, I don't know if that makes sense or not, but that's my initial.
As I say, why is that, Ken?
Well, I it's. I don't know, I I I I'm not a hundred percent sure that I really believe that, I'm just brainstorming, but it's uh, feels like. I don't know, it feels like they're not taking a house, like they built something infill development, you know? Uh, a a housing unit has not been removed, it wasn't added, but it also wasn't removed.
It wouldn't bother me either, especially if someone is building it so they can afford to stay in town. And they don't have to sell their house and move away.
Yeah, but then there, then we're back to the parking issue too, you're doing a short-term rental. They get to do it, they don't have to follow the guidelines of the licensing, because we only allow the fifteen in licensing, so then. You're opening another can of worms and then you've got people parking all over the place again.
So maybe that's something that we can look into later on.
Then they're violating the fifteen, I mean, we find out about it, it's illegal, because they're violating the fifteen. You know, and if we ever wanna raise that, we could, I don't think we should, but like. Don't need to make it double illegal, or maybe we do.
Yeah, I have no issue if they're on the list waiting list to become short-term rental and they use it for that purpose and they're following.
But right now, we do have ADUs that are rented out, but the ones I know of are long-term.
Right, and that is certainly. What what you want, I guess. Okay, well, I will keep then working on ADU stuff and at the next. Meeting, I'll have more information on those things and kind of lay out. Some potential ways forward and maybe we can start working on like a potential restriction. Truth language, something like that, and if we. Put something down in a few months and the housing authority is not there yet and we, you know, then we get five people immediately who want to. Build ADUs, I'm happy to. Monitor those. Perfect.
Are you, sorry. Are you considering uh, including questions in your survey for the. Community input uh, about co-housing, living uh, living in all those other options as well, or?
Yeah, I, so I'm.
I think it's smart to just gather information about what people think.
Um, so, and I think. If you don't mind, so that we can start our. Regular meeting. I will push. An update on the cop plan to the staff update section in the regular meeting, does that work for?
Sure.
Don't have issues with.
If somebody's waiting to listen to the regular meeting or something.
Right, um, you're just supposed to start when it's noticed, you know, right, and where it looks like we're at seven oh four, so. Cognizant of our starting time. So.
Okay, so I'll call to order the regular meeting for March fifth, twenty twenty-five. Roll call.
Uh, Jefferson Luch.
Here.
Katie Maxwell.
Here.
Chuck Howard.
Here.
Kent Slaymaker.
Here.
Vice Chair Ursula Kuzelik.
Yeah.
And Chair Cindy Olsen.
Here.
Okay, approval of the agenda with the motion, please.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second. Um, all in favor, yay?
Yay.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, appointment of chair and vice chair.
Yep, so in March, we have to appoint chair and vice chair, obviously. You don't have to make a change, but someone will have to make a motion to rep. Point someone as chair and then your first and second and vote and then vice chair.
So do them separate.
You could probably combine the two, I think, sure. If like, if, for example, if you wanted to keep it as is, you would just say move to approve. Cindy is the chair and uh, Uchi is the vice chair and that's the motion on the table.
Okay.
Either or, I could do.
Ready stepping up or is someone making a motion?
Wants to, wants to take it.
No, you don't get away that easy. I make a motion that we leave the chair and vice chair. As they are with Cindy Olsen being the chair and Ursula Kuzeliki. Being the vice chair.
Seconded.
Um, all in favor? Yay? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, you guys. Uh, now, is there any conflict of interest? So if there's a conflict on an agenda item. No disclosures, okay, no conflict of interest. Next is approval of the minutes. A motion to approve and second and then if there's any corrections. You can still do it. Yeah, it's just a motion.
I'm just doing planning commission minutes from February fifth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Okay, I, discussion, um, I found a couple corrections. I believe, and Wonders not here, so on the. Highlands Development, that first sentence. Back in two thousand twenty-four. I think it's supposed to say two thousand four.
I can do that for. Yep, that sounds right, cause nothing was going on in two thousand one four.
And then towards the bottom of the page. Above public comment, one, two, three, four, five, up. It says propose rezoning to R and then a number there.
Should be what, R three, I think.
That's what I thought too. The city is proposing rezoning to R three.
Yeah.
Okay. And then.
Yeah, that's right here. Yep.
Okay, and then on the last page, discussion at the end of the sentence. Um, Commissioner Leach, Leach expressed concern about traffic on Highway one oh three. And asked if the city could put a tip. That the road would get widened.
It sounds correct, like a.
Like to give them an update, yeah.
An update or something.
Okay.
Okay.
That's kind of what I thought too.
I read it weirdly too, I'm with you, but I, that is with. That is with the manner that my my statement, that does work.
Okay. Any other corrections or something? Um. So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say yay. Any opposed, motion carries. Um. Next item is public comment, we do a public comment if somebody's sitting in the audience or logged in that wants to make a cup. Uh, public comment to the commission, do we have anybody signed up?
If no one on mine, I'll just, I doubt there's anyone signed up, but I'll just check.
I didn't sign up.
No one signed up, who knows?
Okay, next item, general updates.
Okay, well, um, a few general updates, I think first, I don't know, I I told Judy, who will soon be our new. Alternate, that if she wanted to. Say anything, that you certainly could introduce yourself, but if not, then we will spray you in at the next meeting.
I think everybody knows. I've been on Thorne and City side for long enough that I know.
All right, uh, yes, that's, unless anyone has any comments on that, I'll just, uh.
Will welcome you up here.
That's what I was about to say, welcome.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, so I'll just, I had two updates and then I'll talk a bit about the cop plan. First is, I mentioned it, the housing authority had their first meeting last week and they're like doing all the. Stuff to get it rolling, which is really exciting, you know, and. Renting off the space and giving it a P O box and like starting to work on the bylaws and. All of that so that they can be a functional operating board or. Entity, I guess, um. Before long, I think their next meeting will be next month. And, uh. You know, once, they're hoping to get all that in place and then hire someone relatively soon, because there will be a director for that housing authority. Which is um, pretty cool, because I think then we'll really have the opportunity to start. Building capacity on a lot of housing stuff. I don't really have too much else on that, I am not serving as the city representative on that guy, our assistant city administrator is, so I'll um. Have him give a, me like a staff report sort of thing, update for next month, they kind of. Talk progress and all that, because I think that could help build on a lot of our. Projects that we wanna work on in the future.
Why is that? Why is not you? It kind of, my mind makes sense that you would be the one.
Well.
That's what I thought too.
I don't really know, um, I think. Council has just given it to him and then also one of the, Janine from council is on there as well, so. There's two from the city, I'm not really sure why it's it's guy, but it's fun with me. Um, he, since he deals a lot more with the administration side, I guess it kind of makes sense, especially at this stage. Reforming it and getting it up and running and all of that, but I know like from the county, it would be Amy Saxton, who's kind of the like community development director. And. Technically, I think Guy is community development director as well, so. So that makes sense in that way. But I'm positive that I will be closely involved once it's open.
I would think from you being at Summit County, you would have some valuable input into it.
Yeah, I've definitely dealt a lot with housing.
Housing, yeah.
They they have more affordable housing units in Summit County than we had housing units, so.
That's why I thought they were like useful.
But of course, affordable is a relative term, a lot of those affordable units are more expensive than the houses that come on sale here, so. Other thing I wanted to note was just about progress on extended stay licensing, we've received officially. Four applications and I have two more that. Uh, we received applications, but they weren't complete, so I sent them back to do more work, so in total that's six.
Right.
Operators, um, we are, I'm working with Safe Built Building Department and. Fire Authority on inspections at the moment, we're trying to just set up kind of like a clear. These are the things that need to be inspected, these are the things that don't need to be inspected, we sort of ran into a little bit of a. Wall a little bit when Safe Built was kind of like, well. If you have a hotel that has twenty rooms and eight of them are extended stays and twelve of them aren't, like. Those twelve rooms that are only short-term could also have horrible issues that affect. Presumably none of them had horrible issues, hopefully is the idea, but, you know, let's say they have an issue in one of those short-term rooms. That could impact one of the extended stay rooms, so if we're only looking at like these eight rooms. You know, are we really doing a great job of? You know, do we just ignore the other ones, or if we see it, do we, you know, go on it and stuff like that, they also kind of. We're talking about the property maintenance code and how that plays, because that also has things like, you know, if you have weeds outside or like. Cracks in the sidewalk or areas that are unsafe outside. Property maintenance code would say. You have to fix those things, but the way our ordinance, I think intent was at least is. Not to. Kind of come down strongly on everything, it's more to make sure these spaces are. Safe for longer-term occupancy, not necessarily meeting. All of the code requirements for residents, and so. We've not done any inspections yet, because we're still kind of just working out ultimately what the scope should be. It's just a little more complicated than like with a commercial. Store, because we do life safety inspections all the time for like downtown businesses when they switch from a, you know. Tax office to a pet store or from a cafe to or something else, you know, because all you're looking at is. Are there any risks or this temporary occup? Are there any risks for this temporary occupancy, you know, you're not living in it day after day. So, more to come on that, we built it in so that it wouldn't be, people wouldn't have to be in compliance till July first anyway. So, there's plenty of time to get those inspections done and work, works towards it. But I think most of the applications are pretty good and people are. Have, I haven't really had any pushback yet, though I think the pushback period could be if someone gets a huge list of. Uh, like violations, so, um, I'll keep you updated on that. Um, so, yeah, that was promising, everyone except for one submitted on the day that they had to submit. So I thought we were only gonna have one, but then we got, you know, basically five on the last day. So, that's exciting, um. Some work on that, um, comprehensive plan. Which I had, I had a staff memo in the work session packet. I think the big thing to mention is that we've decided that because we have. Quite a good plan already in twenty seventeen, I think three of you were on planning commission when it was approved in twenty seventeen. And you can tell that how much work was put into it. We determined with Maria, who's our best and brightest fellow, with having an assistant city administrator, which we didn't have in twenty seventeen. Um, that we're going to update it mostly in-house. Um, so as opposed to just hiring a consultant to do all the work and all the outreach and all the writing. We will sort of take the lead on that and then hire out consultants. Sort of as needed, you know, if there's a really particular mapping or graphic thing that we just don't have the tools to do. Hire it out, or if there's translation services, for example, so that it can be surveys and the like, can be. Multiple languages, um, will obviously be a cost, but, um. I think it's pretty exciting because we're getting close to be able to sort of kick it off in full, I'm. Hoping that it's about a nine-month process, ten-month process, that's about what it was last time. And it was a much bigger rewrite last time, there's certainly some sections we need to add, but I'm going to hopefully lean heavily on Maria to. You know, put a lot of work into it as well, which will be huge because it's helpful for her. Because every community does a comprehensive plan, presumably every five to ten years, it's helpful for me because. It's a lot of work, so, I think for now, at least this month, we're just working on. Back-end stuff, putting together surveys and graphics and kind of webpages and things like that, but we are planning a. Kind of kickoff community meeting, that'll be sort of our big start, it'll probably be the first week of April. Or maybe the second week of April, depending on how busy the first week is with planning commission.
Wow, that soon?
Yeah, we wanna sort of jump right in, uh.
Month from now, yeah, okay.
So. Um, I don't know that there's a whole lot of. Things that planning commission really needs to do right now, but I'm anticipating that starting in April and moving onward, we'll kind of start tackling. Things kind of each month, when we have a meeting, kind of say, all right, well, this time we got feedback on housing. You know, since we talked about that, and here's what we found on housing. What are our thoughts on creating objectives on the housing and working through that and then moving on to each additional elements and then. Kind of making our way through it, then probably in autumn, have kind of first draft of different sections that. You know, that presents, um, I think we'll have multiple community meetings to talk about specific issues, you know. So maybe one month it's just about tourism and recreation and outdoor stuff. Then, you know, later that month, we'll have another community meeting, talk about housing, and then, you know, that's where we can get a lot of feedback on some of the things we've been talking about. And then get it in the comp plan and then also start immediately jump into it, so. If all goes well, I think we can have it done early twenty twenty-six, if all goes horribly, then it. Twenty twenty-six, it would be longer, but that's the beauty of having it in-house, is if it takes a little longer, that just means it's. You know, approved a little later and then it's in, kind of, it's not out of date. Quite as quickly because it was approved three months later, so, um. I don't know if I have any like request for action or anything at the moment, but anyone has questions?
I think it'll go pretty easy, it seems like we just did it, even though it's been.
Right.
Twenty seventeen.
Well, it is unbelievable, reading through all the goals and objectives, there's been so much that has happened. The last seven or eight years, and so, I'd say three quarters of our goals and objectives are now sort of. On date because we've either achieved them or we've made steps towards achieving them, or they're just no longer relevant. Because we've done something totally different, like the comp, comp plan doesn't talk about them. The comp plan in twenty seventeen says we should eventually do something with the land behind the Argo that we received from the B L M. And now, you know, it's like an open park with trails and, you know, plans for government and all of this, none of that would even started in twenty seventeen. I think, we've had, we had East End Action Plan that was done since then and a downtown master plan that was done since then. In twenty seventeen, we barely met, mentioned the idea of having a structure, downtown parking structure, and then I think if grant funding goes well. We could be under construction next year on that structure, so. There has been a lot that has happened.
You feel better, I've been sitting here for so long, right?
Yeah, why do you?
It's like, wow, okay.
So, I think it's exciting to build off of what we already have and. And plan for the next ten year, seven years, years, ten years.
Oh, that's great.
So, um, I think that's it for me on updates, if anyone has questions for me.
Have they started renting out the Habitat or Humane again?
Uh, the first two, um, the far-right building with two units got their C O's last week. And so they can be occupied, um, the next two that are ninety percent of the way there, we don't have C O yet. So they can't be occupied yet, but I think it'll be this month or.
And who do people go through for that? Is it through them?
Well, those are all, they're all like sold.
Okay.
They were all of for sale units, I believe, at least the first four I know all had immediate people who are. Moving into them as soon as the C O happens, there was that, but I think all A D R.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, they're all accounted for.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, um, okay, I guess we're to the ordinance. Cause the ordinance was in the packet. And from it sounded, sounds like we don't need to change the wording unless we want it to be changed from. Eating to cooking.
Yeah, I think if, if you ultimately decide that this ordinance. We should change the definition of a dwelling efficiency unit. From perhaps what currently says, um. It, it, yeah, I'm sorry, I pulled away from it. Currently, the definition says dwelling efficiency unit, a dwelling unit containing not more than one room. Or enclosed floor space arranged for living, eating and sleeping purposes, not including bathrooms, water closets. Laundry rooms, pantries, floors, hallways and other accessory floor spaces. An efficiency unit is also known as a studio-type dwelling unit. So in work session, of course, a few minutes ago, we discussed changing it, I believe, from saying. Dwelling unit containing not more than one room or enclosed floor space arranged for living, cooking and sleeping purposes, um. The current proposed ordinance would, um, establish. Efficiency units as uses by right in R three, R M, C one, C two zone districts. But wouldn't have that changed, so if you want to make a change to the definition, then the motion, if we motion to approve. We'd have to have the recommended change to the definition of dwelling unit, eating to cooking, perhaps would be as simple as. So, kind of your call, I have, we can, I have a motion ready for either path.
Okay, so, and it's the motion to forward it to council.
Yeah, recommend.
Recommend.
If, if you wanted to just keep it as is and not change. Uh, eating to cooking, you would just recommend approval of, uh, the ordinance as presented in the packet.
Right.
And just so it's on the record, um, the purpose of the ordinance really is that right now. You could not create multifamily efficiency dwelling units as a use by right, you would have to go through a conditional use permit. So the benefit of this is it opens up a smaller, simpler units as a thing that someone could build. Which could, you know, encourage development in the future, make it a little easier for folks to get more, perhaps more affordable units.
Okay, so do we have a motion for the recommendation to council on this ordinance? With the proper wording. That's whoever makes the motion, with the change or without the change, yes. The change of cooking to eating to.
You could do the simpler motion and if that motion fails, then you do the cooking motion or, you know.
Or do the first one, the right one, yeah, move it up. I was just gonna say, pass it on to her.
Okay, uh, we make a motion to recommend that city council approve it in ordinance, cmenting section twenty-one fifty. Of the Idaho's Prince Municipal Code to establish efficiency units as permitted use in the R three, R M. C one and C two zone districts within the city. After changing the definition, uh, from eating to cooking.
That was good.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Okay, yeah, we're good, that was good.
Or just any more discussion, okay, now roll call.
All right, um. Katie Maxwell. Chuck Howard.
Yes.
Kent Slaymaker.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ursula Cruzalain.
Yes.
Chair Cindy Olsen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Okay, any other business? So we'll adjourn the meeting and it is seven twenty-seven, if you need that.
Perfect, yeah, thank you. Have a good night, Ken. Yeah, yeah.
Good night, Karen.